This is the first student recognition of the school year, I believe. Is that right? So it's been awhile, so welcome. Thank you for being here. So every year, White Bear Lake area high school students have an opportunity to access more than forty college-level courses as advanced placement college in the schools courses via our partnership with the University of Minnesota and Project Lead the Way courses. In fact, total value of credits earned by White Bear Lake area high school students was more than $2.69 million at the University of Minnesota tuition rates last year. The College Board recognizes students for success on the Advanced Placement exam through their AP Scholar Recognition Program. In this past summer, one hundred and ten White Bear students were recognized: seventy-two members of the class of 2019, thirty members of the class of 2020, seven members of the class of 2021, and one member of the class of 2022. So congratulations to the following AP Scholars who received scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. Now, I'm just going to be reading the names of those who are here. So the list is much longer than this, but we're going to highlight those who are here. So Mica Anderson, AP Scholar. Come on up. I'm going to pause for a moment, well, especially if we have more students coming. Marissa, you'll make sure we have them. I want to show, we're handing out a certificate signed by the Board, and then also coveted bear pin. So it's the only way to get one of these pins is to be recognized here, so it's a special honor. Alright, we're going to continue, and then I will get other names as they come in. So Marianna Dopkins, AP Scholar. Let's see, okay. Alright, Maddie and Andrew were AP Scholars with honor. So congratulations to those two as AP Scholars. They received an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. So, and that was Maddie and Andrew. AP Scholar with Distinction. So congratulations to the following AP Scholars who received an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. So Matthew Shunard. Okay, and then mention a couple more students' names. They're not here, but these two students received national honors. So two of our current students received national honors in addition to AP Scholar with Distinction honors, and those two are Isaac Mariama and Ryan Peterson. So I'll mention, so Isaac was a National AP Scholar and AP Scholar with Distinction, and Ryan Peterson was National Merit Scholarship Program Letter of Commendation and AP Scholar with Distinction. So, alright, so now, we'll have all the students back. We'll take a photo.
Maybe you can put on a lineup here, maybe make two rows, and find a window so you can see the camera left off the screen. Perfect. There you go. I think you're good. Maybe you want to stand like right here. Yeah, there you go. There we go. Perfect, and then go to perfect. You want to keep your hands behind you. There we go. Okay, I think you're good. Can you move? There you go, so I can see you. There we go. Okay, here we go. One, two, three, and pick up you here. Okay, and then I'm going to get out of the way for anyone else who wants to take a picture. Thank you.
Alright, parents and family members, friends who are here, would you please stand up and thank you for your support of your students? Probably many nights helping them study, at least when they were a little younger, maybe when it got more advanced, maybe not as much, but thank you all for being here. We have, I think we have cookies in the back, alright? So please, students, take them, or if you have younger siblings, either here or at home, take some to your younger siblings if you wish. So thank you for being here. The regular meeting starts at seven o'clock, and we're here, the School Board members and I will be here if you want to chat a bit, so thank you.
Bellloyd?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
Allison?
Here.
Fahy?
Here.
Mullin?
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Would you all please stand and take your hats off and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we have before us, we have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
There's a motion by Ms. Allison. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. All in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Ayes have it, we have an agenda. We also have before us a consent agenda, which is our customary sundry items that we deal with month to month. This month, the generosity of our community towards our student body is extremely great, so I would like to thank them for their generosity. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fahy?
Yep.
This will require a roll call vote.
Bellloyd?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Alright, ayes have it, we have a consent agenda. This is the portion of the meeting that we do, public forum. This is a, if any member of the public wishes to speak, we just ask that you fill out a card. I do not see any cards up here. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak during the public forum? Alright, seeing none, we will move on to our first informational item, C1, which is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Kazmercheck?
Alright, thank you Chair Mullin, members of the Board. Before tonight's meeting, we recognized students who received honors in the AP Scholar and National Merit Programs. Only current student honorees joined us tonight, but a total of one hundred and ten White Bear Lake area high school students and graduates were recognized in the honor program this year. Congratulations, students. Thank you to the volunteers and attendees who joined us to celebrate homecoming. With special thanks, going to Mary Coetz and Carol McFarland, who spearheaded an all-school reunion event. At the celebration, I enjoyed terrific conversations with grads who have been, who have a long history with the district and with District Center. The original White Bear Lake area high school was commemorated for being more than a hundred years old with a new bear and Washington School Bell monument that was dedicated that morning. I hope community members stop by and chat with me over a cup of coffee between 11:30 a.m. and 12:30 p.m. on Wednesday, October 23rd, at the downtown White Bear Lake Caribou Coffee. There's no set agenda, so please feel free to order a copy from the barista and find me in the meeting room to join the conversation. District students are encouraged to wear orange on Wednesday, October 23rd, in honor of Unity Day, the signature event of National Bullying Prevention Month that has been recognized in the United States since 2011. Tickets for this year's Fall Musical, AIDA, is currently, are currently on sale for the public. Shows will be performed at 7:00 p.m. on November 15th and 16th, and November 21st and through the 23rd. Matinees will take place at 2:00 p.m. on November 16th and November 23rd. The November 16th matinee will have an American Sign Language interpreter and will be free for senior citizens, who should reserve tickets through the regular ticket process. Alright, the following month, week, and day celebrations are being recognized in October: National Principals Month and National Bullying Prevention Month, National School Lunch Week, Indigenous Peoples' Day, today, Indigenous Peoples' Day. End of Hispanic Heritage Month is tomorrow, National Bosses' Day, and National School, Safe Schools Week, National School Bus Safety Week, and Unity Day. Alright, with our first snow last weekend, it is important to remember the emergency school closing information in case there is a need for it. If winter weather is so severe that schools need to close, parents will also be alerted in three ways as soon as a decision is made. A school messenger phone message and email will be sent to all parents. Those who have opted in to receive text messages will be alerted in that way as well. A message will be posted on the homepage at www.isd624.org, and messages will be posted on the district's Facebook and Twitter pages. Always assume schools are open and in session unless you hear or see differently from a source listed above. Okay, now, so we've enjoyed speaking with members of our community at three public meetings that took place during the last week of September and the first week of October. The materials from the public meetings related to the bond referendum, including flyers, presentation files, a Q&amp;A document that can be found, can all be found on the district's website at www.isd624.org/bond2019. So that Q&amp;A document is a compilation of all of the questions that were asked at each session, and that is available on our website. So I'd like to highlight some of the most frequently asked questions and some of the more frequently asked conversations that we've had. First of all, enrollment, that's something that rings true with attendees. We are at, we are at capacity at about eighty-seven hundred students, and that figure of ten thousand eight hundred and six represents what we expect to be in a decade, assuming that seventy-five percent of our agricultural land builds out. And if you've seen what's happening to that ag land throughout the district, I think we're well underway, and we're well on our way towards that figure. We also have the great thing occurring in some of our older neighborhoods, where we have homes turning over, and that's contributing to our enrollment growth as well. We've shared comparative data. This is voter-approved school debt tax levy for payable 2019, and this example is on a home of $250,000, valued at $250,000. So these are neighboring school districts, all in the last few years have passed bond referenda to support school building projects in their, in their school districts. So this, this graphic, the voter-approved school debt tax levy, White Bear Lake, over on the left, we're currently at $24 a year, and if the bond referendum is passed, we would be at $275 a year on this, for this example. That figure is still below the average of our neighboring school districts of all of these neighbors listed. The average of all those listed is $317, so that 275 is still below that. And this is an important point to make, because what we're asking of our taxpayers does not put us as an outlier in terms of tax impact and in terms of what others have supported in the, in the area in the last few years. So that's been an important point and an important discussion point. And then finally, we've highlighted a, the Minnesota Homestead Credit Refund Program. There are three different tax rebate opportunities. There's the Special Property Tax Refund, and then there's a Tax Differral, and then this, the Minnesota Homestead Credit Refund, and this is the one that we think many of our residents will qualify for. There's two examples provided. The one on the bottom is an example of a $275,000 home, and the household income is listed at different levels. So if we were to just focus on the bottom line, on that, on that bottom table, $275,000 home with a, for a family with a household income of around $100,000, the rebate would be $168 a year, so the net tax impact would be under $10 a month compared to the $23 a month, so.
On that slide, Dr. K, the household income, is that gross, adjusted gross, or taxable? Do we know?
There's a note on the bottom that I'm not going to be able to make out.
Adjusted gross income.
Adjusted gross income, but there's, there's some other things listed, so, yeah. I could, I could bring it up here if you want. Household income is the federal adjusted gross plus non-taxable income, less qualified retirement plan contribution, dependent elderly or disabled subtraction. So that's the note on, from our municipal advisor, so. Okay, so let's see, what else on this one? That, I think that's about it for that. I, I think it's just important to note that the average home in the school districts is 275,000. The average household income is around that hundred, that hundred thousand, and any, anybody with a household income of 113,000 or less actually qualifies for this, this program. So, so we think a lot of our families would, would benefit from this. So just a heads up to folks who might be listening, that that would be an opportunity to see the tax impact of a, of a bond referendum be lessened considerably, and this is available every year. So this would be an ongoing opportunity, so. Alright, and then we wanted to show the why video tonight. Last month, we showed the what video that explained the program, the bond referendum, the highlights of it, and this is the second video, and this is the why.
What I love most about White Bear Lake area schools is really the great sense of community that we have here.
You live in White Bear Lake, you live in anywhere in the surrounding areas, you're a bear.
When I see our students and what they're doing, you know, I feel proud that they're a product of, of our system and of our community.
I'm so proud to be part of this school district. It's a very special place. Our strategic plan has provided a new direction for us. We have defined what we want our students' experience to be here, and we need facilities to come along with that new vision. And that's why on November 5th, we're asking our community to come out and vote on a bond referendum that would support these exciting changes for our students. This plan is focused on four areas. It accommodates our projected enrollment growth, it provides safe, secure, and healthy learning environments for all students, this plan increases opportunities for students through a single unified nine-through-twelve high school experience, and lastly, it creates flexibly designed learning spaces to support student-centered instruction.
I'm excited that we're actually looking at what would be best for our schools and our students. There was a lot that went into planning for this, lots of opportunities for community members to have a voice.
The fact that I've had a say in different things, been able to speak for my peers, have been absolutely incredible.
We unanimously approved the plan that we thought was best for everybody involved.
People are choosing to move to White Bear Lake, they're choosing to build homes in White Bear Lake, so we're essentially at capacity right now, and we anticipate adding another twenty-five percent to our student population over the next decade.
So that's good for businesses and property values to have a desirable place that people want to live in.
Our facilities are aging, the simple comforts like our air conditioning and heating and making sure the roof isn't leaking, those things impact what we're able to do for students.
Expectations around safety and security have evolved over the last few years, and Sam, you're invested in our facilities to make sure our students and staff are safe.
We've done a lot of great work for the past thirty-plus years, making sure our community feels supported in that split campus model, but it's not the best that we can be. Many different options were discussed, and everyone arrived, that we are a one-high-school community, and coming together as one White Bear Lake area high school is going to propel us into the future.
We know that transitioning from one building to another can cause stress. We know that building relationships with adults is really critical. When you have two different high schools, you have only so much time that you can establish that relationship, and then they're off to a different campus.
You finally start to get comfortable in North Campus, and you start to learn what the circles are, and then boom, you're in another school, and now you're in the maze of South Campus.
In order to maintain the level of programming that we currently offer and even expand that, we need to be one campus, and so when we looked at coming together in that high school that will eventually grow to thirty-two hundred students, there are really intentional ways that we can make a big school feel small for our students and families.
The idea that we're all bears and we're all under the same roof will allow us to reimagine what the high school experience is for our students.
Flexible learning spaces around all of our buildings, not just focused in our high schools, I think is really key. I mean, just sitting in front of a teacher and being lectured, I mean, that doesn't work for everyone, and that's kind of how our system is set up right now.
Student agency is a big part of the strategic plan, so I like that we're looking at more collaborative spaces. I want them to explore and find and discover that learning on their own.
We're at a pivotal moment in our district's history to really form what we believe education should look like for our students now and for many, many years to come.
This $326 million bond referendum impacts all of our buildings and students, and can be accomplished with a tax impact of about $23 a month for the average homeowner.
Whether you have kids in school or not, I mean, the bottom line is, you know, we have to accommodate the kids and do what's best for the kids, really, you know, and so that's, that's what we're trying to do.
Please learn all that you can about this referendum, and remember to vote November Alright, now, as always, please reach out to me if, again, any, any of the viewers have questions, please, please reach out. Again, we hope community, community members will vote on this important question on November 5th. So with that, Maddie, I'll turn it over to you. Do you have?
Okay, happy October, everyone. I don't think anybody was expecting snow this soon. This week, everyone can spend a little more time out in the cold at the Harvest Bowl football game on Wednesday night at 7:00 p.m. Student Council will be collecting cans at the gate, and if you bring three cans or non-perishable items for our local food shelf, you get free admission. Finishing off this week is MEA. Students are looking forward to a break this weekend after many weeks of hard work. At the end of the month, on Halloween, National Honor Society will be hosting their first of two blood drives at South Campus this year. High school blood drives supply nearly 10,000 units of blood every year, so we encourage all students who are willing and able to donate to participate. On Halloween night, keep an eye out for any students trigger canning. Students will be out collecting non-perishable food items for our local White Bear Lake food shelf. Finally, tickets for the White Bear Lake High School Fall Musical, AIDA, are on sale now. The link for the ticket sales is on the district website. Get your tickets as soon as possible, because they sell out fast. Go Bears!
Alright, thank you very much. Any questions for Dr. Kazmercheck or Maddie? Alright, thank you very much. Seeing none, we'll move on to our first discussion item, 2018-2019 World's Best Workforce Annual Report. Morris, is that you?
Yes, it is. Thank you Chair Mullin, members of the Board, and Dr. Kazmercheck. Tonight, we're going to look at measures of academic success through the framework of the World's Best Workforce and our Achievement and Integration Summary Report. We had this good discussion and questions at the September 23rd work-study meeting, and tonight, we're sharing a brief summary in our full board meeting. The World's Best Workforce is put forth by Minnesota statute, and we are required to report our progress towards reaching the goals of the World's Best Workforce. Those five goals are that all children are ready to start kindergarten, all third graders can read at grade level, all achievement gaps between students are closed, and that all students are ready for career and/or post-secondary education, and that all students graduate from high school. The first goal of the World's Best Workforce, that all children are ready to start for kindergarten, we look at the number of children that we screen for kindergarten, and participation in our pre-K program. In 2018-19, we screened 744 kids for kindergarten, and in pre-K, we served 109 students, or I'm sorry, 199 students. In the next year, we'll add Teaching Strategies: Gold Growth in Reading and Math as an additional measure of our readiness of our students for kindergarten. In 2018-19, we had outreach specific communities served by Title I schools. We encouraged parents to register for five half-days as preparation for kindergarten's five full days, and staff visits to parents to help complete all aspects of kindergarten The second goal regards all third graders reading at grade level, and we measure that using the metric of the MCA, reading for third grade. In 2018, we had 65.1% of students reading at meets or exceeds level. In 2019, 62.6% of third-grade students were at the meets or proceeds, or exceeds level. While that is a one-year drop for our third-grade class, our cohorts moving from third to fourth grade and fourth to fifth grade in that year increased, third to fourth grade, we had proficiency, that group increased by 2.6 percentage points, and from fourth to fifth, an increase in proficiency by 7.8 percentage points. This summer and now during this school year, principals, instructional coaches, curriculum leaders collaborated to create our literacy learning vision with a goal to implement with fidelity research-based teaching strategies and practices for structured and explicit literacy instruction with a focus on phonemic awareness. The third goal of the World's Best Workforce is that all achievement gaps between students are closed. We measure this by looking at the equity of access and participation in our college-level coursework. We have equitable enrollment strategies for identifying students, outreach for students, and support of students in our college-level courses. Our bar for participation across all demographic groups in 2018-19 was set at 64%, the highest that bar has been, and amongst 10th and 11th graders, that bar of 64% of students was surpassed by students who are Asian, Hispanic, two or more races, and from, all from families with medium to high income. All other demographic groups that we look at did decrease the gap in equity between groups, so while we have not, did not reach that full 64% across all groups, we did significantly close the difference in the participation of those groups. We do this through offering 51 college-level courses. New and popular in 2018-19 was our Certified Nursing Assistant Program. In 2019-20, we'll be offering AP Bio at North for the first time, and we have four sections of that going on this year. The class of 2019 had 81% of its students participate in at least one of the college-level courses. That's up four percentage points from the previous year. And also in 2018-19, 48% of 10th graders participated in at least one college-level course, and that's up 16 percentage points. The next goal of the World's Best Workforce is that all students are ready for career and/or post-secondary education. To measure this, we look at the remedial coursework that our students take beyond high school, and participation in our career pathways at the high school level. In 2018-19, 29% of 11th and 12th grade students participated in at least one career pathway course. Of those students, 83 had paid internships in that pathway during the school year or in the summer of 2019. When we look at the requirement, the percentage of students who are required to take remedial coursework- of, the percentage of students who are required to take remedial coursework following high school, we, that percentage has consistently decreased over the years due to efforts to increase students' awareness about bypassing remedial courses via articulated coursework, their scores on the MCA, or their scores on the ACT. Our fifth component of the World's Best Workforce is that all students graduate from high school. The class of, we look at that using the class of 2018 four-year graduation rate and the percentage of students who continue to successful graduation beyond that fourth year. In the class of 2018, 534 students graduated, or 88% of that class graduated. 8% of that class, or 48 students, continued to work towards graduation at the ALC or TEC and 4% of the class of 2018 dropped out or moved on to another program that we're not aware of. Of the 48 students who continued to work towards graduation, 19 have since graduated and 18 still continue to work towards graduation at the ALC or at TEC. That puts us at this point at 92% for our five-year graduation rate for that class. In 2000, with the class of 2018, the ALC also had a 10-point increase in graduation rate to 54% over the previous An additional point that the World's Best Workforce statute requires to look at is whether or not we are providing equitable access to excellent teachers. So are all of our teachers receiving their education with students of the highest caliber. This graph represents or displays that both our, across the district and at our individually racially identified school Willow Lane Elementary, we have a higher level of teachers who have master's degree than this, than across the state, a higher level of teachers who have 10 or more years' experience than schools across the state, and a higher percent of teachers who are teaching with an infield license than across the state. Finally, along with the World's Best Workforce summary, we also present the Achievement and Integration Report goals. We'll be moving to a new integration and achievement goals in the upcoming year, but our previous goals, some which are very similar to the goals of the World's Best Workforce, include increasing the graduation rate to 96% by 2020. And as I already said, to the class of 2018, that graduation, excuse me, graduation rate was 88%. The second goal is to close achievement gaps in reading and math by 15 percentage points. Our achievement gaps, as measured by the MCA in reading and math, do persist, but moving from 2018 to 2019, most gaps did decrease and almost every demographic group outperformed the state average in both proficiency and growth in proficiency level. The third goal of the Achievement and Integration is that, is to increase the partition, participation rate in rigorous coursework of traditionally underserved students who are college and career-ready. As I stated before, in this past year, we raised that bar to 64%, closed those participation gaps across some groups, and decreased those gaps across most. So we are approaching equity there. And finally, the fourth goal pertains to Willow Lane Elementary and that they increase reading proficiency at Willow Lane as measured by the MCA to 70.8% by the year 2020. At Willow Lane, looking from 2017 to 2019, the proficiency rate has increased from 50% in 2017 to 54.5% in 2019. In third grade, there was an increase of 44% to 55%. Fourth grade, an increase of, from 46.5% to 50%. And in fifth grade, a small decrease from 62% to 58% of students. That is our summary of our World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration goals. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Morris? Thank you very much. We appreciate the report.
Thank you.
We will now move on to our second discussion item, D2, the Sustainability Update. Is that me, Ms. Paul? Ms. Paul, welcome.
All right, thank you Chair Mullen. Welcome, Dr. Kazmicek, members of the board. We are very excited to share with you tonight about how resource sustainability is part of our culture in the White Bear Lake area school district. Our district's strategic plan articulates shared beliefs that are relevant for tonight's presentation. First, we are stewards of the earth. Learning enriches one's quality of life. Challenge leads to innovation and growth. And communities with shared goals have unlimited potential. Through operational excellence and student leadership and engagement, we are creating new ways to educate, reflect, and innovate, to embed resource sustainability practices into our school district. And so I'm going to start with some introductions. First, Mr. Dan Rozier is our District Operations Coordinator. And Dan's collaborative leadership and priority of continuous improvement have brought about operational excellence and you're going to hear several examples of that tonight. Second, we have Madison Carroll. She serves as our student liaison to the school board. She really cares about the environment and she's very active in the environmental club at the high school as well as on student council. And both of those groups have articulated goals in which they have made an impact at the school level and in the community and they continue to look for opportunities to do that. And then Sophie Davis is a high school junior. She's had the opportunity to testify at the legislature both as a middle school student and again as a high school student to raise awareness about water conservation and how students can be a critical part of the solution. And you'll hear more about her impact and her growth as a leader later on in the presentation. And finally, we have Ellen Heinecker here, who is the City Manager for the city of White Bear Lake. And she has been convening broad stakeholder groups on two very exciting projects and she's going to share some detail about both of those projects tonight. So we're going to begin with Dan Rozier.
All right, thank you. Sir Rozier, welcome.
Good evening, everybody. In the Building Operations Department, we're always looking for ways to help make our schools more sustainable and we're also looking to try to save a few bucks. And I just want to share a few examples of how we've been able to do both at the same time. LED lighting. We started this a couple of years ago. We started upgrading some of our high-use gyms and outdoor lighting into, over to LED. These, these projects have given us a quick payback, usually two-to-three-year payback on these projects. We've been able to leverage some rebates by XL to, to speed up that payback. And we've also been able to increase the lighting in our gym, increase the lighting in some of our dimly-lit parking lots and save on maintenance costs. The, both gyms and parking lots are really difficult for us to maintain lighting levels. We have to either get a lift hauled around from building to building to be able to change light bulbs, hire a bucket truck to change lights in our parking lot. And now with the LEDs, they're pretty much maintenance-free for the next 15 years. We talked about at the work-study meeting how our solar installations were all complete back on September 23rd. I want to share that now four of six schools are up and running and by the end of this week, all six schools will be up and running on solar, generating power for our buildings. We're going to meet later in the month with Ideal Energies to talk about how we can share some of our data from our panels with our students and create learning opportunities from our solar panels in our buildings. And lastly, I want to talk about our waste reduction and recycling program. We've become the model program around the Twin Cities for waste and recycling. Back in 2014, we partnered up with Ramsey County and Washington County and Vitamel Health. They gave us, they gave us some grants to really look at best practices in our schools. We were able to update our containers in our schools with labels, proper colored containers. We paired them up in all classrooms, hallways, offices. Our cafeterias, we turned, we were able to purchase these nice sort tables with signage above that showed students where things go. We started milk carton recycling at all our schools. We started food-to-hogs programs at all our schools. It's really been a great program. Back in 2014, many of the critics, the folk, even the folks from the county, were saying, Dan and high schools' food-to-hogs program really hasn't worked. We haven't found any buildings that have been able to sustain food-to-hogs all across the Twin Cities. We were able to, from top down, Dr. K., Dr. Lovett when he was here, we talked about starting these programs up and partnering with the county and accepting grant money. And the only way we'd do it, if Dr. K. and Dr. Lovett would support it, which they wholeheartedly did, our principals supported it. But the biggest difference of why these programs are working in our school are students. It's just been amazing how the students have stepped up, helped with sorting, anything we've asked of them, they just kind of jumped on board and now the program just sustains itself from the great work of our students. I want to turn it over to Madison here. She's going to talk about some things the students do in our schools.
So like Dan said, they, you know, labeled the recycling and trash bins. They put them together. I think it's really helped students to know and actively work to help fix the problem of, you know, if we're putting garbage in the recycling, we can't recycle it. So when students are, you know, given the opportunity to actually recycle and told what to recycle, I mean, and like Dan has done, it's really helped and I've noticed a lot of kids in classrooms actively recycling their extra papers or any cardboard, anything they get and they, they know what they're doing with their stuff and trying to make the school a better place. Also, students have been working on water conservation. Last work-study meeting, I got to hear an in-depth presentation on how in our schools, we're working to conserve water. Some main points is we've benchmarked our water usage to identify incorrect problems. We've used automated irrigation systems. We've piloted a new technology at Willow that then expanded it to Lincoln, Central, and District Center. Groundwater conservation assessments at Van Ness and Matoska. Also, at Matoska, students have been, worked with environmental resource specialists, specialists from Ramsey and Anoka County to measure water usage throughout the school. Students did hands-on work to collect data, which the county then used. At the work-study meeting, we got the opportunity to hear from a couple of students from Matoska about how they've been working hard to study water conservation and enact it in their own schools. Sophie Davis here can give you a little bit more insight into exactly what that process involves.
Welcome.
Thank you, board. Water conservation has always been important to me because of its significance, both locally and globally. From water levels of White Bear Lake to becoming aware of people who do not have access to clean water, I realize the importance of water and how much we take it for granted. Through H2O for Life in elementary school, I've been encouraged to do simple things in my daily life to conserve water and was able to see the direct global impact as our school raised the money to build a well for students in Uganda. More recently, I was able to testify at the legislature regarding this pressing issue to access funds for learning resources. I've worked with other students, teachers, and members of the community to collaborate and help make an impact on this important issue within the community. My passion for water conservation has given me the chance to be a part of meetings and speak at events that have taught me to take action and help me develop as a leader.
Okay, as a part of student council and environmental club, I've seen the firsthand student desire to share what we know and take learning from the classroom into the community to make an impact locally and globally. White Bear Lake students this year are going to have the opportunity to lead a statewide student summit and work with students from other districts to brainstorm about water conservation and sustainability and educate others about these topics.
Okay, so I interviewed with Train for a paid internship and was selected to work with Train as the, to help the city of White Bear Lake use energy-efficient practices. I went through the optics tutorials and preparation for reviewing data and considering solutions for energy efficiency. Just recently, I toured the sports center. They just redid that and that'll be my first project. Adding on to that, I'd like to introduce Ellen Heinecker, City of White Bear manager.
Good evening, Chair Mullen, members of the school board, and Dr. Kazmicek. It's different juxtaposition being on this side of the podium, so I appreciate being able to be here tonight. I just want to start out by saying, what a pleasure meeting these students. I mean, I don't have the opportunity to interact very often with the students from our school district and anytime I do, I walk away incredibly optimistic and happy and just feeling good about what we have going on here in our schools and what we have for our future. So tonight was just another great example of that. So thanks to our students for that. But that's not what I'm here to talk about specifically. I just want to give you really a brief summary of some of the programs that we're involved in very directly with the school district. And quite honestly, because of the relationship we've had with your staff here at the schools, it's really propelled our projects to an area that we really didn't even expect or couldn't hope for. So first of all, we more recently became involved in a program called Climate Smart Municipalities. It's still new to our community. Not many people have yet heard about it because it was new to us just beginning of this year. We were invited by the University of Minnesota's Institute on the Environment to participate. There are five other communities in the state of Minnesota that had been participants for about five years and we were the sixth community invited as they received some more funding. The funding actually comes from the Federal Republic of Germany, which supports this cooperation between cities in Minnesota with cities in Germany to talk about how we can have conversation around what they term the energy transition and how it relates really specifically to what we have going on here and what I'm hearing about tonight, especially with workforce, is our technology is all about, and I talked to you Chair Mullen just early before the meeting, about green technologies. Technologies are propelling on a trajectory that is, has been unseen and will continue to do that. And how do we keep up with that as communities and also as a workforce and how do we prepare our students? There are many other conversations that we're having around these topics, but I'm really focusing on this specifically as it relates to some partnerships we're developing with the schools. I had just a quick email to Sarah Paul, like, you know, we have a real strong interest from a community in Germany that wants to partner with a class here to talk about measuring weather data. And in, within moments, I get this email back and by the next day, I'm communicating with the teacher, have a meeting set up. We had a meeting and within a few days, incredible enthusiasm, was able to bring that with me on our exchange. And it was underway right now is a great exchange between two classes that will be measuring weather data using what they're learning in math. It's high math. It's like regression analysis, something that I didn't, I don't remember from way back in the day. And also talking about some of the broader issues related to the data that they're gathering. A lot of exciting things, I think, that will come out of this and I look forward to be able to bring that back to the board to let you know where that's, where that's gone. But again, that came from the ability to really partner with the White Bear schools on some of these broader community conversations and it's, it's pretty incredible. I want to also add that when, last year, when we were just finding out that we're becoming a partner, they invited us to participate in a video contest that was between cities involved in Germany and also the Minnesota cities. And there were, I think, 16, 16 people, no, 16 groups, excuse me, that submitted video production to talk about energy and sustainability. And proudly enough, of course, it was our White Bear Lake schools that were the winners and this, so their international award was recognized at our school board and I look forward to being able to recognize them in front of the school board as we talk about the next video contest that comes up. So again, this is another great example of how welcoming and open the school has been into working with us on this project. I wanted to maybe quickly transition to something that is also more recent and very now because as we speak right now, we're finalizing the details of a grant application that will go towards the Minnesota Department of Transportation. It's called, it's a CAV program, but really it's all about automated vehicles. You may or may not have heard a little chatter about it, but there's been a lot of work going on behind the scenes. It was a brainchild initially from the Chamber of Commerce who got many of us involved and excited about the concept of having a pilot study here within the community of White Bear Lake. Now, the city is serving as the lead agency, but I can tell you- Now, the city is serving as the lead agency, but I can tell you that without the partnership with the school district, it would not be where it's at today. We've had an opportunity to brainstorm some amazing ideas, and through the work of Sarah Paul, there's some great workforce initiatives that, and career pathway connections to our grant that she's been able to create through your schools in connection with Century College and also with the University of Minnesota. All of these, we hope to realize if we are in fact successful in receiving a grant. Sarah is much more prepared to speak to that directly if you want to have, if you have some specific questions to it. I believe that she's had an opportunity to share some of this information with the board, but I just wanted to, on behalf of the city and on behalf of the work that I've been putting into this, just acknowledge the incredible partnership that we have with the White Bear schools in really making this into a program that is unique and, I think, really attractive and hopefully something that will bring us to the ability to get a grant and test out this pilot project. We'll be doing a formal presentation also to our council at our public meeting at the next meeting, so then there'll be more information out there for the public to consume. But again, just acknowledging that partnership. And then, I think lastly, I just saw a presentation on the World's Best Workforce, and I thought that was very fitting with the partnerships that we're developing with the schools and some of our initiatives in being able to work as a broader community to really help prepare our youth as our world changes rapidly, to support all of us as we retire out and welcome them in, because I'm excited and encouraged by what I see and really happy about our partnerships. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or I think that was it for this particular piece.
Any questions? Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, one mainly for Ms. Paul and Mr. Roser. And I'm wondering, it might be premature, but going back to the lighting and the data, and we're going to develop curricula off of that, do we have an idea of what sort of data we'll be getting? Is it going to be cost data, efficiency data for the electrical lighting? Is it going to be brightness lumens of the LEDs versus?
Pretty much all of that.
Okay.
Yeah. And some of the data from our solar panels, we're going to have an app that shows real-time what our panels are producing, which should be pretty, pretty cool for the kids to see what, what we're able to power with what's on our roofs.
Very good. I'm sure there'll be a lot of writing going on pretty quickly. Thank you.
Any other, Ms. Fahey?
I just want to say, Ellen and the students, thank you very much. I'm just trying to digest all the information that we were given, and I'm sure once I look at it carefully, I'll have some more questions. But I was just interested, the grant for the automated vehicles, is that been applied for already, or is there a time when we may find out if we have that grant?
We went to a stage-one meeting and shared the initial concept and got very exciting feedback, worked, put the detail of the proposal, we're submitting that on Wednesday, and we'll hear within the month.
In a month, okay. And then, I did have, the two classes, the classes, the White Bear Lake class and the one in Germany that are working on the weather data, what level is that? Is that middle school, high school, elementary?
It's, it's high school.
High school.
It would be high school, yep. And they're, and the teacher I met with has an advanced class that's working on some very specific formulas that are, they're exactly the same models and formulas that are being used by this partner school in Luden Shite, so, so a lot of parallels.
Thank you. I'm sure I'll have more, but I need to look at all the information. It's.
I want to acknowledge it's Mr. Salinger's class, the high school math class, and he's been beyond excited to be involved in that partnership.
Other questions, comments? Okay. I want to thank you all for your work. This is great stuff, and we look forward to hearing about the continued progress. So thank you all very much. With that, we will move into our next discussion item. On a consistent basis, the board takes up policies, the policy committee reviews the policies, and then from there, they come to the board for two readings. So we will tonight start with a group of policies. For the first board reading, we'll ask for any questions or comments regarding the policy, and then we will then move from there. So with that, our first reading of school board policy, 601, 603, 613, 618, and 619. Are there any comments, questions regarding those policies? Ms. Ellison?
I just have a question about 613, and maybe, Mr. Chapman, you can help me remember from the policy meetings. It, 613 references students entering grade eight in the 2012, 2013 school year and later.
Excuse me, Ms. Ellison, can you tell us where you're at?
Yes, I'm sorry. It's page, it's 613-1, it's.
613-1.
Page number 79 in my board packet, it's Roman numeral two, general statement of policy. But it's, it references throughout the policy, grade eight in the 2013, 2012, 13 school year and later. I think what we discussed in the policy meeting is that those students have already exited the system. Is that right? Ms. Paul, is that right?
I believe that was the case.
Um, and the reason I say that is we discussed at the policy meeting, do we need that text then in the policy if those students have already exited the system?
All right. Chair Mullen, Ms. Ellison, we agree that the language is pretty, is dated. However, we did follow MSBA model policy. Mr. Morris was going to follow up with them as to why that language was left in there, but was intentionally left in, and so we decided to, to leave the language as the model apology, policy-directed.
Okay. Yep. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Dr. Newmaster?
I noticed that, but to me, it just kind of showed when, how long we've done this as we struggle to update to meet the newest requirements at the state and federal level on language. So it let us know when they started it. And grant you, I'm not sure we have anybody left in the system if they're graduating, but it does give us, as we look at it five years from now, when did we start doing this?
Yep. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
All right. Any other questions regarding those policies? Seeing none, those will then come back for their second reading next month, and I'm sure Mr. Morris will get us an answer for why it was. Ms. Paul?
Chair Mullen, Ms. Ellison, I was just informed that I was responding to a different part of the question. I was thanking people for coming, and I missed part of that question. Actually, that is an error. That language should be pulled out of that policy, and so we will make sure to update that. My apologies. Yep.
So the, so 613, all the policies will come back, and 613 will have the updated version then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you very much. With no more questions then, we will move to the second reading, school board policy, 205, 402, 423, 523, 414, and 419. We will take these, all these six policies in one fell swoop is, so if I can get a motion to approve those policies? Motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second? Second by Dr. Newmaster. Is there any discussion regarding those policies? They have come back for their second reading. Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the policy, policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. Those policies are adopted. We are now at the portion of the meeting for board forum. Is there any board members that would like to share anything during board forum? We'll start with Mr. Wilson.
Yes, I would just like to take this opportunity to remind our viewing and listening public that if, at this point, you have questions regarding the upcoming referendum, please do look up the district website. That is the single most comprehensive source of information, factual information regarding the referendum, and if you have any remaining questions, I would invite you to contact Dr. Kasmicek.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Ellison?
As it's Indigenous Peoples' Day, I wanted to just acknowledge that our school district is on the ancestral homeland of the Dakota.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right. I want to, sorry, Ms. Boy.
I just wanted to point out that Lincoln Elementary received the, when the U.S. Secretary of Education announced the National Blue Ribbon Schools, and Lincoln Elementary was one of those, so congratulations to Lincoln Elementary, it's a, it's a really big honor.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Certainly. And I thought she was going to say that the Cornhuskers lost to the Gophers, but I guess not.
Oh, you're cruel.
I, I, this past Friday, I had the honor of attending the White Bear Lake Educational Foundations Gala with several board members, and I just want to publicly thank them for their work. It was an amazing event, and I know that they've raised some money for the students and for the school district, and I want to thank them on behalf of the board. It was a great event. So if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
I will second that, and we are adjourned.